Let's get started, folks. Welcome to the November 7th meeting of the Mercer Island City Council. My name is El Jenke, pinch hitting for Mayor Jim Peirman, who's out of town. And with that, Allie, would you read the roll?
Sure. Councilmember Bruce Bassett.
Here.
Councilmember Jane Brom.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Cerro.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Grady.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Grous.
Here.
Mayor Jim Peirman. Acting Mayor El Jenke.
I'm here. So we have a piece of special business to begin our meeting this evening. This is a proclamation dealing with pancreatic cancer. In 2011, an estimated 43,000 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States and 37,000 will die from the disease. Pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and is the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States. When symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it's usually too late for an optimistic prognosis. And 74 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. All of the racial, ethnic groups in the United States, of all the racial, ethnic groups in the United States, African Americans have the highest incident rate of pancreatic cancer, between 34 percent and 70 percent higher than other groups. Approximately 790 deaths will occur in Washington State in 2011, with some of those deaths likely to be Mercer Island residents. There is no cure for pancreatic cancer, and there have been no significant improvements in survival rates in the last 40 years. The federal government invests significantly less money in pancreatic cancer research than it does in any of the other leading cancer killers. And pancreatic cancer research constitutes only approximately 2 percent of the National Cancer Institute's federal research funding, a figure far too low given the severity of the disease, its mortality rate, and how little is known about how to arrest it. And the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the first and only national patient advocacy organization that serves the pancreatic cancer community in Mercer Island and nationwide by focusing its efforts on public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. The Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in Puget Sound support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well to those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. The good health and well-being of the residents of Mercer Island are enhanced as a direct result of the increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now, therefore, I, Acting Mayor El Jenke, on behalf of the Mercer Island City Council, do hereby proclaim November 2011 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. This evening, we're honored to have some leader, a leader in the field of treatment, Dr. Picosey, who is very active in this area. Doctor, would you like to approach the council and say a few words?
Thank you very much, Mayor Jenke. I'm really privileged and honored to be before you this evening and just to take a moment of your time to express my appreciation for your willingness to proclaim this as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month on Mercer Island, as it's being done throughout the nation. As you alluded to, this disease really represents a human tragedy. There are, as you've read, 40,000 people approximately that will die from this disease in the United States this year, a number that's growing. It has the worst prognosis of any cancer. It presently claims the fourth most deaths of any cancer, later this decade to be the third most, and in fact, if trends continue over the next 20 years, it will be the leading cause of cancer death in our country, surpassing even lung cancer and breast cancer. Happily, despite these dismal statistics, there is an increased awareness and enthusiasm for approaching this deadly disease. You may have been aware yesterday of an event called a Purple Stride, which was in Madison Park. This was a more or less spontaneous gathering of what turned out to be nearly 2,000 people who donated close to $150,000 to the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, which is the national patient advocate for this disease, and in fact, something I'm proud to be on the board of directors of. So awareness is increasing. There's hope for increased funding through an congressional bill that's presently being worked with in both chambers of the House and Senate in Congress. And happily, too, some of the leading research, both clinical and scientific, that's taking place in this disease, is happening right here in Seattle. So I can tell you, having really spent the last 15 years of my life working with people with pancreatic cancer and other genetic malignancies, and having taken care of some prominent Mercer Islanders already who have succumbed to this disease, this is an extremely important healthcare topic, and I appreciate your willingness to address it and be aware of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I noticed Senator Horn in the audience there. You've been active in this area. Would you like to say a few words to the council?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for passing this proclamation today. We all think that we're invisible, invincible, that we'll never get sick and we'll live forever. But it doesn't happen for all of us, and when that moment comes, that somebody, either you or somebody in your family, is told they have cancer, you certainly appreciate people like Dr. Picosey, who lives on Mercer Island and spent his life treating patients and trying to find cures, but if not cures, at least ways to make it invisible, or at least put the disease in remission. We've all watched on national news that Steve Jobs fought the battle with pancreatic cancer and died with quite a young man, and we know how much he changed all of our lives out there. And had he been able to live and continue his work, he died at the peak of his career. Who knows what additional advances that he could have brought to our civilization? So we're very, very thankful that there are people like Dr. Picosey, who lives on Mercer Island, who has devoted his life to the treatment and other patients and the research of this disease. Thank you for honoring his request.
Thank you, Senator Horn. With the indulgence of the council, I'd like to move up Agenda Bill Number Four, Agenda Bill 4684, Underage Drinking Ordinance, the first reading in recognition that the press is here and maybe get that item addressed first. So is there anybody who would like to address the council on the issue of our proposed underage drinking ordinance at this time? Thank you. Please speak clearly into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Ariane Pouton. I'm from Seattle, Washington. Thank you for your time, councilmembers and the mayor. I am a project director for a drug-free community coalition in Seattle. Our target area is southwest and southeast Seattle. We also have a grant from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services called Project Stop. It's mainly for underage drinking prevention. I'm also a member of a community advisory coalition of CATCA, and CATCA is a community of anti-drug, Coalition of Anti-Drug Communities of America. It is a national organization, has about 5,000 coalition members throughout the country. It's also the main technical assistant and training center for the Office of National Drug Control Policies that fund 800 grantees throughout the country. Mercer Island received one of the grants from OEDCP. As a member, on behalf of my coalitions and a member of national coalitions, I want to applaud your leaderships in this effort. If it passed, it will be one of the first social hosting ordinance in the state. And it has, these type of ordinances have been used throughout the country, and it has shown some promising, a lot of promising success. And so once again, I want to applaud your leaderships in this effort, and I want to thank you for supporting to reduce underage drinking in your communities, and in this effort, we'll help reduce underage drinking in my communities, which is your neighboring communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on the proposed underage drinking ordinance? Okay, seeing none, let's proceed with Agenda Bill 4684. Do we have a staff presentation? Katie?
Yes. It'll be both Derek Franklin.
Thank you, council, for the record. Derek Franklin, Department of Youth and Family Services, administrative and professional services manager, and also the project director for the Mercer Island Communities That Care Coalition. I'm here tonight to talk about the proposed underage drinking ordinance. At the January 2011 annual planning session, the council directed staff to examine the option of creating a civil infraction as an additional method of deterring underage drinking on Mercer Island. This civil infraction would be issued to the responsible person at whose residence an underage gathering involving the consumption of alcohol takes place, regardless of whether or not that person permitted such activity. On September 19th, the Mercer Island Communities That Care Coalition recommended the council consider adopting an underage drinking ordinance, often referred to as a social host ordinance, in support of its ongoing prevention efforts. The council provided specific direction to staff regarding the following elements that should be contained in the proposed underage drinking ordinance, which is before you tonight for its first reading. First, to impose strict liability for the purposes of law enforcement issuing infractions. Second, to define underage gatherings as including four or more people. To impose a $250 fine for a civil infraction and for repeat violations. To deter drinking by anyone under the age of 19. And to include language to exclude landlords, excuse me, from liability. A few updates I'd like to inform council about. Since that recommendation, first, CTC staff received some anecdotal feedback on a previously scheduled and non-scientific voluntary survey that found over 90 percent of island parents either agreed or strongly agreed with the statement, "I believe our community should enforce legal consequences for adults who give alcohol to minors or give youth alcohol on their property." This positive feedback aligns with the majority of feedback that we've received. Concerns that we received included clarifying the landlord liability question, the possibility of underage drinking just moving someplace else, or general questions about the extent of parent liability. Next, staff was invited after last meeting by Councilmember Jane Hague to the King County Council Committee of the Whole to present on Mercer Island's progress on considering an underage drinking ordinance. Also, the Washington State Liquor Control Board has since rolled out guidelines for drafting social host ordinances in communities across Washington and joined the Washington State Coalition to reduce underage drinking in a campaign to support social host ordinances as effective prevention measures. Mercer Island is considered in many ways ahead of the curve in this regard. Finally, staff was invited by the Washington State Division of Behavioral Health and Recovery to present weekend before last at the Washington State Prevention Summit, where Mercer Island's proposed underage drinking ordinance was given as an example, as an effective prevention effort. Unless the council has questions, I'd next like to turn it over to the city attorney to address other details of the proposed ordinance.
Good evening, council. Katie Knight, your city attorney, and I think actually Mr. Franklin has covered all of the provisions that the council had asked to be addressed in this particular ordinance, so I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, why don't we start with questions? Dan?
Katie, I was curious. We were told last time that the maximum civil penalty is $250. If we were so inclined, could we impose that a separate penalty for each underage person who is present at that, at the gathering?
I think that the way that this is written would contemplate the fact that you're actually having the underage gathering.
No, I know how it was written, but...
Okay. I don't think you could, the way this is written.
But do you think legally we could? That would be something that would be permitted to do it on a per-person basis?
Per-person basis. I'd have to do some redrafting. I think we could possibly do it. I will say, just given personal experience in prosecuting some of these matters, there's a tendency for folks of these parties to take off, but certainly if we wanted to look at it and say it's 250 per incident, I'd have to do some redrafting, but I think you could do that.
Mike Cerro?
I just want to ensure that this says what I think it says. The paragraph after C3, if the property is rented or leased, that applies every situation that you can think of, or can you think of a situation where a renter is renting a house and he's not there, and some way it comes back to the landlord? That's what that paragraph addresses.
Well, we have, we have another section which talks about that it doesn't apply to landlords?
I thought that was this one right here.
If you're saying if the property is rented or leased, the landlord or lessee is not covered by this ordinance, and they're not impacted by this ordinance unless they fall within the category persons described under two or three herein. In an effort, the last time we met, to talk about this, we talked about ensuring that we did capture, that they wouldn't be able to basically escape liability if in fact they're the ones who are essentially hosting the actual party, because they couldn't say, "I'm a landlord, so you can't get me."
Okay, just looking for a little bit of daylight here. On number two, C2, the person in immediate control of the property, control of the property does not mean the person who owns the property in the case of a landlord with a renter. Is that correct?
Correct. And you're saying immediate control, so I think that the anticipation would be the person essentially who was the actual lessee of the, so say it's the 21-year-old guy who leases the property, he's the one who's in immediate control of the property.
Okay. And the other one I wanted to ask about was the exemption paragraph. Is the purpose of that paragraph for facilities like the VFW?
The purpose of that paragraph is to address exemptions that already exist under the RCWs. So we talked about last time we met, that there's some RCWs, that there's exemptions in those that allow a parent to give their child alcohol for medical purposes, for religious purposes, and this was intended to capture the area so that we wouldn't be treading on the state's toes, so to speak.
So if somebody drinks in the VFW, they have to get one of these licenses. Isn't that the license they have to get?
Correct.
Right? So then this ordinance doesn't apply to them? Or that becomes an exemption?
Oh, you're right. So the ordinance wouldn't apply. If you do, if you comply with state law, this ordinance won't override that. We can't supersede state law because the state law has already addressed those particular issues.
He's talking about getting a permit, a permit for serving alcohol in a rental facility like our community center or the VFW hall.
Correct. And that's, that's the intention. So we don't want to target those folks who actually comply with state law.
This might be for Derek. Why didn't we include drugs in this? So if somebody has a party and they're not drinking, but they're smoking marijuana, why doesn't this regulation or ordinance apply to them?
I would actually almost defer to police on this, but part of the reasoning for that is that marijuana possession is illegal across the board, except for the cardholders. And so apples, oranges, a little bit, this is, this is something that's proven because supplying to minors is already a crime. Does that make sense?
Kind of like alcohol.
Alcohol already is. Marijuana, it's a separate, it would be a separate piece. Okay, thank you.
Jane?
Yes. Katie, this is for you. Under civil penalty, I want to make sure I understand that the penalty of $250 for each cited responsible person, if there were parents in the home with maybe a couple of older children above 21, they would all be cited, or could be potentially, for $250?
I would probably argue in that situation, and that would be, there's a discretion element with the police, obviously, but in that situation, it would probably be the parents, not the older children.
Or other people over 21 who might, or might not be aware of what's going on.
Right. If you had your two 21-year-old twin guys holding a party at a house that maybe they own, I think both of them would get cited.
And in, under exemptions, paragraph D, this does not apply to alcoholic beverages given to an underage person when such beverage is being used in connection with religious services, and the amount consumed is a minimal amount necessary for the religious service. Is there a reason for, I mean, it seems to me that it would be perfectly appropriate to stop the sentence after religious service, if the beverage is being used in connection with religious service, period?
We captured, we were trying to capture what the state law exemptions already provide for, just to ensure that we weren't overarching on our authority, trying to grab more than we could.
Thank you.
Mike Grady?
Katie, I raised this at the last reading, and it has to do with the age issue, and the title of the ordinance is underage drinking, and throughout the ordinance, we refer to as the term underage.
Right.
And, you know, as you directly pointed out, here in RCW 66 dot 44 dot 270, underage means under the age of 21. And we've landed on 19 for this ordinance, so I'm curious if there was a gathering of four 19 and 20-year-olds and they were drinking. It's my understanding then that this would not apply to them.
This, this civil ordinance would not apply to them.
Right.
Correct.
And can you describe why we're redefining underage drinking in a local ordinance?
In, at the last hearing, excuse me, at the last council meeting, that was the direction from council to go to under 19 years of age, because my understanding of the direction from council was to capture those groups of students where there are big parties happening and parents are not present, or responsible adults aren't present, and trying to aim at basically the high school groups, after the TOLOs, after the graduation parties, that sort of thing, and trying not to capture, say, somebody who's 20 years of age, in college, with his roommates, who, who may or may not be having a party, but that you're not trying to go after a group, you're trying to aim at those teenage groups and the teenage parties. That was my understanding from council.
Right. And the issue, as you may recall that I raised, is that maybe we should change the title because we're in effect redefining a state RCW in a local ordinance. So we're coming down from an underage provision in state and federal law, 21, down to 19. So it seems to me you've got some exposure there with allowing the 19 and 20-year-olds to essentially be free of this particular provision.
And...
Seems to be an issue.
Well, you know, I'm sure you understand, in federal law and state law, too, as long as our ordinance is drawn more narrowly than their requirements, we're allowed to regulate on that, as long as that area's not superseded by the state or by the federal government. So this is drawn much more narrowly than the state laws, and for that reason, it would be, it's appropriate if the council wishes to keep it under 19 years of age. Certainly, if that's a council desire to say under 21, that's fine as well, but with the definition, because state law will still apply, this is a new effort by the city. I don't see that there'd be liability or a gap there. I mean, again, it's up to council.
I think Mike's question is, we may stay with 19, but...
Under the age of 19.
Under the age of 19. Is there any need legally, is there any need to use some other word other than underage?
I don't think you'd have to. I mean, you could change it to social...
I think that's the hardest question, is do we need to, from a legal point of view, do we need to use some other word other than underage?
Because we define it in here, in any citation written underneath this ordinance, that's what you'd look to, the local ordinance. I don't think you'd need to make that change. Certainly, you could change it to social host or something like that, if you wanted to change the name.
Yeah. Well, I raise it because nowhere in the ordinance, other than in your bullets on page one, you mention age 19 until you get down to some of the detailed provisions. So throughout, the definition of underage, even starting off with your fourth whereas, you're defining it as 21. And then all of a sudden, we change it to 19 when we get to the second page, under, under section E, where we go underage person now shall mean any person under 19 years of age. And it just, it seems to be an internal conflict within the ordinance that needs some tweaking. Either we change the title or we do something, but as I read through this again this morning, every time I saw underage, I'm thinking, okay, that's 21 and under.
Well, in ordinances and such like this, because we're using the definition, we're defining, excuse me, we're defining what the city of Mercer Island means by that, and as this is written, it's just like in any other statute, that if you go back to, you look at the definitions section to see what is the meaning of that particular phrase as defined within that statute, that RCW, that ordinance. So because you define it in here, and if it's cited underneath one of these sections, then your requirement would be to go back and look at that definition, because it's certainly not going to apply. We couldn't say, we couldn't cite somebody for minor in possession only if they're under the age of 19 because of this ordinance. We would not be allowed to do that. This is only for this very narrow citation provision.
Katie, to maybe perhaps address Mike's comment, could we, just to make it internally consistent, could we add a short whereas, right after the one that says citing the RCW, whereas the Mercer Island City Council seeks to address alcohol consumption by Mercer Island, 19 and under, or whatever, where we say our desire is to focus on 19 as a, as a whereas, so that later, when you get into the definition, it is harkening back to a citation there under the initial...
Katie, before you respond, Rich, let's get the questions out before we look for solutions here. Are there any other questions for staff here? Bruce?
Derek, if I could, can you, you mentioned a CTC survey question. Could you repeat the question and the results and give us a little bit of the context of that, where that fit in?
Of course, the CTC is a federally funded grant. We're in year five of our fifth year. We've got an option for year six through 10. Part of the work to reapply for that grant is to gather additional community data to give updates for assessments. In those efforts, we coordinated with school to gather some sort of soft survey data from parents regarding some of their opinions around underage drinking, enforcement, drug alcohol use, attitudinal things to support the CTC's social, social, I'm sorry, community norms efforts. One of those questions, that was a four-part question, the fourth of that, part of that question was asked, how much, how do you agree, disagree, strongly agree with the statement, quote, "I believe our community should enforce legal consequences for adults who give alcohol to minors or give youth alcohol on their property." And it was done via Survey Monkey and that program, and the results came back that over 90 percent of those who chose to respond, the N was about 280 parents, it was given across all school grades, so elementary, middle, and high school had the option to respond, that about over 90 percent either replied that they agree or strongly agreed with that statement.
Thank you. I'll have further comment, but it's comment, not question.
Okay. If there are no further questions, why don't we do, go right to comments and...
Motion on it?
Well, this, Mike, this is the first reading, so we're really not going to pass an ordinance tonight. It's only the first reading again.
We don't have to vote on it?
And we want to have our debate and discussion and give staff guidance as to what to bring back. So let's hold off on motions. We can have formal motions or raise hands or whatever, but let's have the commentary and discussion first. Would somebody like to lead off?
I will, because it just ties together with the question I just asked. So essentially, you answered the question I was going to pose, or the comment I was going to pose, but that is that I just want to let councilmembers know that I've had a couple of conversations in the last couple of weeks in which folks have argued fairly passionately against this, and I will explain why, but I...
Talk to us, okay?
Okay. So, El...
[laughing]
Exactly. I can't do it. So I've talked to a couple of folks who have argued fairly passionately against this, and the, the argument that they have posed is that parents generally want... and the, the argument that they have posed is that parents generally want very much for their kids to not end up having drinking problems, and by, as part of their normal course of events, they are trying to control what kids are doing, and this puts an additional and unnecessary burden on parents who are already quite beleaguered by the fact that their kids are out of control. So that was the, that was the, the argument that I heard, and I just wanted to pose it to council. But Derek's done a nice job of pointing out that that is very much a minority opinion in the community, and so I throw that out for comment from other council members. I thought it interesting, and it certainly conflicts with some of the other information, but I guess I'd be curious if others have heard similar comments.
I would say, it seems to be an exception in the draft here that addresses that issue up top of page, the third page there.
Yeah, I think that's different.
Actually, I'd like to address what you just talked about.
Please do. I mean, I'd throw this out there, not as a conclusion, but as a comment I have heard in, in search of...
Right, I don't, I don't like making, and Mr. City Manager, I don't like staff making policy or employing the support for policy based on anecdotal information, or certainly not on Survey Monkey. I think when staff starts doing that, we get into some unprofessional or thin ice on that.
I understand your point, and I think Derek only just recited it and its limitations.
Yeah, well, actually, no, what happens over and over is that we asterisk our comment on this poll, and then, and then it gets forgotten, and then it gets taken as, that's the way it is. So I just don't like going there. I've said that many times, but in this case, I don't think it's probably that far off the mark, and that's what I wanted to add to what you said.
Other comments? Mike Grady.
Well, having had three kids go through high school already, I could safely say that I think there may be a majority of parents that, you know, are pretty responsible about it, but there are still an awful lot of them out there, and it'd be interesting to talk to the chief about this, that think it's okay to hire a 19, 20, 21-year-old to monitor the party. And then when the police show up, they claim ignorance, that they didn't know that there were 20 kids in the basement drinking or smoking pot or whatever it is. And, you know, I've had direct exposure with that, you know, and they have no qualms about, you know, getting a limo full of looker, and then, and their response back is, well, at least we know where they're drinking. I think the more we can put the parents on the point and let them know that, you know, this is not only the kid's responsibility, but it's yours. These are your kids, and whether they're 18, 19, or 20, you know, and they're underage drinking, they're your responsibility, and there should be some way to impose some penalty when they claim ignorance, or they come up with unique ways to make it look like they don't know, when in fact, they do in fact know.
So I take it you're in favor of the ordinance, and...
Well, but, yeah, we'll get to more of the details.
Well, here's what I would suggest, let's get any other comments out, and then we can start talking about what kind of direction you want to give to staff, and what kind of changes, if any, we might want to propose, so.
Dan?
I'm sorry, Katie, I just had a question, which I didn't pick up the first time. How does the penalty work? You've got a penalty in 9.21040, which, by the way, that underage gathering there should be capitalized.
Oh, you're right.
And then in 9.21020B, it references a notice of civil infraction as authorized by chapter 7.80 RCW. Is that somehow different from the 250 in 9.21040?
No, that's just authorizing, that's the RCW that authorizes municipalities to create their own infractions, and the 250 liability.
So is there any reason to cross-reference the 9.21040 and...
We don't have to.
You don't have to?
The actual, so the actual ordinance itself says, so you usually have the definition section, here's what it encompasses, and then actually, the actual penalty itself usually comes at the end of ordinances defined, here's what the civil penalty is. So that is the, that's the, I'm sorry, the ordinance, the MICC, that the officers would write if they were to issue the infraction. We have an inattentive driving local ordinance on the island.
That's fine, as long as that's, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
So, and thanks for clarifying. You know, I appreciate the work staff has done to, to address the issues we raised in the last meeting. I think you answered, you did everything exactly as we asked you to do, and, yeah, this is, again, I mean, we're very fortunate that this suggestion was made to us by one of our citizens, and that I appreciate the council taking this up and, and deciding several months ago to put this on our agenda. I need to go back and find the name of the citizen who brought this to our attention, because it started with an email. I've got it somewhere in my computer, but I need to find that, and we should make sure to invite him to the, to the meeting where we eventually pass this, because it's because of his willingness to make a suggestion that we're, we're at the point we are right now. So, thank you.
Jane?
Well, I think it is a good ordinance. I'm happy to support it. Having read the police blotter for a lot of years, I know that on a summer night, when the police come, there's a big party, and everybody scatters, and it's, you know, I can, I know there's so many situations like this where the police didn't have this particular tool, and it was harder to prove criminal intent and knowledge of a party on, on the part of the adults. So I think this is a, a good ordinance, and I'm happy to support it.
Okay, Mike Sero?
I would like to, I also like the ordinance, I would like to ask the council if they would be interested in the staff incorporating somewhere in the agenda a one-year follow-up to bring back to either the council or the Public Safety Committee on whether it would have been beneficial to include drugs in this, and just how often the police actually use this ordinance to improve the situation we have out there. That's a question to the council.
Okay, what kind of, how's council feel about that? Just let's see, a show of hands?
Well, it was a couple parts, yeah.
There's two different parts, two or three parts.
So I think hearing about it again in a year is one, one question. I'm supportive of that. Adding drugs to it is a different question, and I appreciate staff's concern that that really is a different issue, and not to say that we don't consider drugs an issue, but to say that it doesn't fit within the context of this particular ordinance.
Well, the intent of that was, after a year, with the police evaluating if they did have drugs in this, whether it would have been another tool in their toolbox to apply it, to where it, maybe, maybe it would have been useful. Maybe they had several instances, maybe they had a couple instances where there were, there was a party of marijuana, but not alcohol.
As I read through section C, it still needs a little bit of work, and I've read it probably six times now. It's, well, hold on, point border, where are we with this? I, there's a progression...
Good point. I mean, to Bruce's point, a one-year follow-up, is everybody in favor of taking a look at the results of this whatever ordinance in one year?
One-year follow-up.
Okay, so that's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The question of taking on an additional issue, that being drugs, in one year, when we do the review, different question, as Bruce points out, and again, that's just a future item on the agenda, for instance, is that something that...
Well, since it was, I'll just clarify, I think we're reading too much into it. If, after one year, the police came back and, and they said, you know, if we would have had drugs in this also, then it may have been beneficial. I'm not asking to tee it up as a separate issue.
Fine, that'll be part of the review, you can ask the question then and see, see what the response is.
Suggesting that in this year time period, the police make mental notes or some, however they do it, that at this instance and that instance, if drugs are in it, we could have used this tool also.
Bruce?
I would just, I guess, make sure we clarify or ask Chief Holmes, we're not talking about asking the police to create a separate accounting of what happens under this particular ordinance, I assume. I think you're looking for something more...
The suggestion makes no changes to what's proposed here in the ordinance. This would just be...
But to clarify, we've all said we'd like a follow-up, but we're not in that, as part of that follow-up, we're not asking that the police do a special accounting of what happens under the terms of this ordinance. So with that in mind, I'm comfortable supporting it.
Okay, now, Mike Grady, you had a suggestion.
Well, I don't know that it's going to help, but, you know, as you read through C, where it talks about responsible person includes, and this may be a question back to you, Katie, by the way, I'm wondering if we even need that sentence where it says, if the property is rented or leased, the landlord or lessor is not covered by this ordinance unless they fall in describing under two and three. Because as you read one, if somebody owns, rents, or leases, or otherwise has the right to control the property, that seems to cover what we've said in that one sentence below C3.
Because the landlord then is the owner, so the landlord's responsible, unless you have the, unless you have that exemption, then the landlord's picked up in one.
Well, yeah, and I was there for a while, but it, I think it needs some rewording, because it's very cumbersome, and, you know, if I've got to read it six or seven times to really understand what it means, tell you what, I'll take some time between now and the next reading and see if I can clean it up.
Okay, good, so, you know, I'll speak up and say that, that provision is important, I think, as an exemption here, so. Okay, any further suggestions for staff or for the council, as how we proceed on this? Okay, so, does staff understand that this is a first reading, the second reading is on the 21st, hopefully, and that the council likes the draft as proposed, and we can move on? Okay. So, having dealt with that, let's go back to our agenda order here, and the next item would be appearances. This is a time that anybody can address the council on any subject of your heart's desire. Do we have anybody who would like to address the council? Please speak audibly into the microphone, state your name and address to the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Mark Klossen. I live at 6107 Southeast 32nd Street, and I'm here tonight to talk about AB 4681, where you're considering parking on the Mercer Ways, particularly where you have, where you have already done paving on the shoulders. You may recall that I have applauded this effort and applauded the council's willingness to make this commitment, because I'm a, I'm a cyclist, and I believe that the, that the paving of the shoulders is an important feature in reducing the transportation conflicts that the council has spent a fair amount of time on in the last year or two. The key, if you want to reduce the transportation conflict, at least from a cycling perspective, is to have predictability. If you have predictability, then it is safe and it is prudent to be able to use the shoulder if it's paved, if you're, if you're riding your bike. If what you have is random and sporadic parking while, while you're trying to ride in the shoulder, you create even, an even more unsafe condition, because at that point, you're assuming that someone's on the shoulder because there's a car behind them, and then, if you're a cyclist, you have a car directly in front of you, and you're, you have two options. You either stop, or you swerve out into the road where there's already a car behind you. I think what you end up with then is more transportation conflicts, and, instead of less. And so I think if you, if you want pelotons to ride on the shoulders, you better not have cars parked on the shoulders. Otherwise, the prudent thing to do from a cycling perspective is you ride on the road. And so I think it's important that the council keep that in mind when they're thinking about the staff recommendation that, well, we really don't have that much parking, so it's not going to be a problem, and we shouldn't do anything. I think that you need to realize that there will be consequences, and if what your objective is, is to reduce conflicts, you ought to keep those consequences in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close appearances and move on to the minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of October 17. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
A second, a second. Comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have the consent calendar, the payables and the payroll. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
They'll move.
Okay, sounds like a motion and a second. Any comments?
I just have a couple of questions there, Mr. Mayor. On the 1014 report, there's a lumber for Clark Beach repair, is that by chance for the Kidd Beach? And that's something that we could cover in Park Track and everything.
Do you remember, you know, it's just, it comes out of the Park Department, just a repair job, and I, I know you asked me that question by email today, and I'm sorry, I just...
No worries, just shoot me an email on that, and also, the, on the 1021, there's a $6,000 payment for the Seattle Shakespeare Company. Is that a normal payment during the late season that we're in and whatnot?
I'll have to get the, the exact data behind it. We often are purchasing performances from any number of theater companies for Shakespeare in the Park or other performances throughout the year, so the answer generally is yes, we, we do this. I can't tell you exactly which date this performance was, or if this may be in advance.
Yeah, if you look at the invoice date there, just to the side, that's August, that's when they finished up, so I think there's just a lag time in paying them for this summer's performance.
Okay, I was just curious about that. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the...
I have a quick question, sorry.
Mike Grady?
Rich, on 927, we've got a line item for $23,262.40. Is that for a new car, or...
You have to steer me to the...
Yeah, it's on page, oh, I don't have page number on it.
This is third page of the first report.
Yeah.
And it's to Car Mart.
Car Mart Chrysler Dodge.
Sixth, seventh item down.
Yes, that probably is the purchase of a new car. It'd be a fleet replacement, a scheduled fleet replacement.
An alternative, you're going to tell me it's an alternative fuel vehicle?
It, I'm sure it's a plug-in electric.
Why am I shocked that that question came up?
I'd love to tell you it's a plug-in electric. Let's leave it at that.
Okay, well, same question on...
The point taken.
Couple other pages, Cascadia International, replacement vehicle, $84,000.
That's an expensive one.
Actually, I think we have new police cars, don't we? Don't we have new Cruisers?
I'm sure that's, that's going to be probably a major piece of equipment. Most of those don't have the options.
It looks like it might be a chassis, because part of that's cut off.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I get the point. I'm glad you remind us of that.
Well, after all, you know, I will remind the council that this city was one of the leaders in putting the Evergreen Fleet Initiative together.
Thank you for...
And it gets touted across the country.
Yes, it does. And while I've got, you're asking that kind of question, I signed the contracts today for our plug-in electric stations, so the, the contracts have been let.
They're really going to happen?
They're really going to get put in.
Okay, so, all in favor of this consent calendar? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so, moving right along to Agenda Bill 4681, parking along the Mercer Ways. So I think we should start with a staff report, and Rich, you going to have a comment or two?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just before it starts, you know, we're bringing this back to the council at... the council had asked us to, when we adopted the Bike and Pedestrian Plan, to deal with this one last issue that wasn't dealt with when you adopted it, and it's the Mercer Ways. And you gave us direction to come back and look at options for signage for restriction of parking along the Mercer Ways. As Ann and her Agenda Bill point out, the staff's gone out and done quite a bit of observation of what they see out on the Mercer Ways, and that's driven the options that are laid out here. And then ultimately, the staff recommendation, which as you see is sort of a lesser recommendation. I guess what I would preface all of this discussion and Ann's presentation here is, this actually is the third time, in my experience, that the councils have tried to deal with the Mercer Ways. And in each case, the councils have tried to decide it based on some amount of technical information and data. And I guess what I'd urge is, that's important, counting number of cars that are parked is important, but this isn't a technical issue in the end.
Notwithstanding having seven traffic, six traffic engineers this evening?
That's right, we've got lots of help. I think this, in the end, and it was 15 years ago, or more than that, when I first saw the council deal with it, this is a values issue, about how you want to use the right-of-way. You have a constrained amount of space, two driving lanes, it's expensive to widen it, you want to keep sort of this Sylvan feel of the Mercer Ways, and you have a lot of added uses. You've got bicycle users, pedestrian users, drivers, and you're dealing with a question of can we accommodate everybody? And I think generally, your answer has been no, and you have to decide, based on your values in this community, which thing needs to be adjusted. I think that's a values question, it's not a traffic engineering question. So, given Ann a bit of a way out here before she does it herself, is that she's given a technical recommendation because that's what she's paid to do, but in the end, I'm not sure that that's what, how you make this decision.
No, and with all due respect, that's not what staff was asked to do in this Agenda Bill. So, it's all well and good that staff has spent, I don't know how many hours, doing something that they were not asked to do, and they've gone out and done it, which is truly unfortunate. So, I think it's, I appreciate your comments, but I think that it was inappropriate for staff to take the time that they've done here to make a recommendation which the council never asked them to make.
Well, and I agree completely, and I think teeing it off that way, Rich, quite frankly, biases the discussion. And, you know, I think, well, I think we need to keep in mind that there are state and federal laws, and that pavement is not owned by just one form of transportation, it's owned by all of them. So, our job is to find a way to make it safe and easy to use for all of them, not just a few.
Well, as long as we're having comments right now, I guess I got to weigh in. I was actually coming here tonight to compliment staff on getting out and doing some good legwork to get a better sense of what's really happening on the ground, rather than just go off of our own seat-of-the-pants field.
Yeah, as was I.
I'd say, Ann, go for it, and don't be too put off here by the preliminary comments.
So, let's, again, begin with the staff presentation, and Ann, please, please start.
And I can still laugh after all that, that's pretty good. So, for the record, Ann Tenella Howe, your Assistant City Engineer. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So, tonight, as we all know, and more for the audience, I think, we're back talking about what do we do for parking? Do we restrict parking on the Mercer Ways? And I recognize that a year ago, at your October 4th, 2010 council meeting was the last time this topic was brought to you for a conversation or discussion, and at that time, the direction to staff was to return with a program to implement parking restrictions on all improved roadside shoulders on the inside of East and West Mercer Ways with the least amount of signage that is feasible and allowing for special events and nighttime And I guess to be open about all of this, this Agenda Bill is really to further that discussion. And usually in our Agenda Bills, we do make, staff does make a recommendation. So, my recommendation for what I have observed and what I have participated in when I ride my bike around the island, is that there might not be enough of a problem today that would warrant universally signing the Mercer Ways with a no parking restriction. That all being said, that doesn't mean that that's not what you may decide as the policy approach for the Mercer Ways. Really, what I would like to be able to accomplish tonight is for a conversation on, I think, two pieces to this puzzle. It's, do you restrict parking on the Mercer Ways? Do you do it now, or do you let staff continue to monitor it and restrict as problems arise? And then, whatever that parking, and then the next question is, what is that restriction? Do you want to restrict totally, no parking any time, that's a 24-hour restriction and nobody can park out there? Do you restrict no parking on pavement? So, what that allows is people to park on, sort of in the unimproved right-of-way, they can't park on the pavement, they can't park on the shoulder, but they can park behind the pavement, on the gravel areas that are there. Or do you sign for no parking during a specified period of time? I've suggested 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. That gets any parked vehicles off of the paved shoulder, or off of the paved area during a time when commuters may be riding their bikes, kids may be walking to school or to their neighbor's house to get picked up by the bus, not quite sure what. On weekends, that allows bicyclists' families to be riding on the Mercer Ways during a very specified period of time, but then that also allows for special events, such as the Shore Club and the Beach Club during the summer months, when they have their swim events, and we know parking is occurring on the Mercer Ways when those events are happening. So, that sort of allows that to happen without the undo, the implications that those clubs need to come to the city to get permission to park in the right-of-way. So, that was, that's my whole intent for tonight's discussion. And, you know, if I overstepped a little bit in making a recommendation that staff continue to monitor, you know, I apologize for that. It wasn't my intent to really tell you what to do, but I wanted to generate an opportunity for a discussion, because it is a big deal. Whatever we decide to do, whatever you decide to do, whatever you decide to ask staff to do for the Mercer Ways, has implications for possibly the rest of the island and what we do on those routes on the island where we want to have other bicycle facilities or bicycle routes. So, all of that being said, I am done with my presentation.
Okay, Ann, I would suggest you absolutely have not overstepped any bounds that the council has established in this regard. We've had sporadic discussions on this whole issue from almost the inception of the time we launched a rewrite revision of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Plan, and we all knew this issue was coming along, and it's my recollection, at no time was it going to be an absolute ban on parking on the Mercers, and at no time was it going to be totally without restrictions. So, let me tee up the debate in that context, that this is about what kind of restrictions can we agree to apply to parking on the Mercers? And let me set forth, the staff has, Ann has proposed possibly restricting vehicle parking at night, 7:00 to 7:00, and within that context, I might suggest, does that mean dusk to dawn? Because, I know that's what's being proposed, but we have different daylight hours and they vary, given by the seasons, so maybe a straight 7:00 to 7:00 doesn't work any better than dusk to dawn, kind of thing. Another restriction has to do with, and I remember specific discussions along these lines, Mike Grady, with the, and I fundamentally, Rich has teed this up as a values issue, and I think it's more a safety issue, and what I'll say with regard to that is, and Mike Grady, you've teed this one up, is about the sightlines, or the important, critical issue here, that it may make sense to restrict parking where there are inadequate sightlines, i.e. around the curve, and those kinds of areas. And a new one tonight might be, as long as you're not parking on the pavement, but I think that's kind of a limited area. So, the other two restrictions that worthy of discussion are weather-related, and I think it was, in my recollection, again, a good deal of discussion about eliminating any restrictions on the Mercer when it's inclement weather, however defined, ice, snow, whatever. And then the final restriction might have to do, what's the other one, special events. And already mentioned our special events at the Jewish Community Center, at the Mercer Shore Club, the Beach Club, and it may make sense to make some provisions within any kind of restrictions we come up with for special events. So, having introduced the topic that way, let's have some discussion about, Jane, why don't you start?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we should start with questions, yeah, let's be disciplined here and start with questions.
Yes, I have a question, because I'd like to know approximately how, or how much of the Mercers are restricted now, because there are no parking signs in certain spots around, on the Mercers. Any idea what that would be? North Mercer, for example, over by Covenant Shores, there's definite signage that says no parking, and I know there is elsewhere.
Yeah, I honestly am not certain 100% where we have all of our signing. I know over by Covenant Shores, there is some no parking signing, trying to prevent the spillover from workers at Covenant Shores and in that area from parking in the areas where we really do not want people parking. And the same is true on the East Mercer Way. After last year's conversation, and as a result of the work that we did last year for the East Mercer Way, for the Mercer Way Shoulder Project, we did place some signs. Those read no parking on pavement, and those are in the, I guess would be the outside curve, the curve where you actually have really reasonable sight distance, and we also have generators that may encourage parking. We've got some trailheads on East Mercer Way where we didn't want, if people were going there to park, to walk on the trails, we really didn't want people parking on the shoulder, so we attempted a no parking on pavement signage, and in those locations, I'm not seeing people parking. There is some no parking, I think it's a 7:00 to 4:00 School Days signage that's on West Mercer Way, over by West Mercer Elementary. So, there is a mix of parking, it's mostly, I think it's mostly driven by what the issue is, what the generator was, that it was encouraging the parking to happen. We have a lot of locations right now where we have no shoulder and we don't have any parking restrictions. So, it's a mix. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. I appreciate that recommendation, cut me a little bit off guard, mind you, but I appreciate it. The, would we, is it practical to have a blanket permit for the week prior to the week after graduation? Meaning, there are many, many parties the week prior and the week after graduation, a date that we all know.
I hadn't thought of that, and I might, I'm not sure who I would defer to. I might, that would, I think that needs to be a conversation between DSG for the issuance or the permission to be parking for a set aside time, and then with our Police Department on how they would schedule that in their calendar for non-enforcement, and how we would get the word out to people that it's okay to-
Well, I think the way you would get the word out is that it would be in the fine print of the ordinance, and you know that everybody's not going to get a permit, and the police just wouldn't enforce it.
Well, that's true.
Okay. I think it might be some merit in that. The other thing I think will be more difficult is, how are we going to address construction parking? How do we, how do we handle that?
I-
Provide it on-site at the construction.
No, that's not practical.
That's, no, that's what you're supposed to do.
But I believe, and I believe the Council member grass is correct, that either within our, the building permit, or within the right-of-way use permit that the contractor and/or the homeowner have to get from the city, there are requirements in there that a large-scale reconstruction, those contractors need to have provided for off-site, off-street parking. So, they either have to rent the old Safeway site and shuttle vehicles, they park at the park-and-ride, and they shuttle vehicles. We know a lot of people don't pay any attention to those requirements in that permit, so you will see contractors parking on the street. And then that becomes an issue for our Building Inspector, our Utilities, our Site Inspectors for-
Well, let me ask you this question, I think those are not good solutions at all.
That's how we're currently handling it, is all I can say.
Right, but in practice, the way in practice what's happening is that there's-
Just questions.
Right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question I have is, the permit process, does construction parking fall under the permit process? The no-fee permit process request?
It falls in, under the building permit process. To get your building permit for a home construction, you-
He's talking about the permit to avoid having to comply with a parking restriction is the permit he's talking about.
Right, so I don't know that we issue permits to allow exemption from a parking requirement. We do up at a high school on certain days, but on the Mercer Ways, I don't think we have anything like that.
No, no, this is what it says right here, sign the no parking zones, suspend the no parking restriction through the application of a no-fee right-of-way use permit. So, if I'm a homeowner, and I'm renovating, and my construction workers need someplace to park other than Safeway, can I, can I request a no-fee right-of-way use permit for my construction workers?
Yeah, I think maybe we all got confused there. We don't do that now. What you're asking is, in the future, if we took this option, would we do that?
That's right. That's right.
And I think the answer to that question would be no. If we know that it's construction-driven, the request is construction-driven, we would be inclined to say no. The requirements for parking for construction vehicles falls under the building, the building permit process. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be considered, I wouldn't consider it a special event application.
We need to think this through, because in practice, the way, in practice, no question.
Mike, let's stick to the questions here, and then we'll have the debate, and we can propose whatever we want to propose after we do the question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's the only question I have.
Okay, Mike Grady?
Thank you, Ann. I'm just going to ask questions on the data. So, don't run away. You may recall, gosh, it's been many moons ago, I drove around with a number of staff, and I think we took the electric car out one time, and-
Did you make the whole way around?
Yeah, did.
Where did you park it?
Yeah, yeah, I have a big battery. But the result of that exercise was the map that's in the current updated plan, where you've got areas that have been kind of either reded out or highlighted that are no sightlines. And those are typically where you've had the biggest problems, as Mr. Clausen pointed out earlier, where you're coming around a corner, and I'm getting to a question. So, my question is, when did you go around the Mercers, and in what form of transportation?
Well, I do have to admit that recently, it's just been by automobile, and it's been during the week, day. been during the week, day, during the work week. But in the past, it's been on a Saturday or Sunday by bicycle.
Okay. Might I suggest, well, question. Put in a question, Alex. Did anyone get on a bike and do that during rush hour, in the morning or in the evenings?
Not to my knowledge.
And, and how frequent were the trips? So, what I'm trying to get is, what's your data set that you're basing these recommendations on? And, you know, when did it happen? How frequently did you go out? What times of the day?
Okay, my, my, my trips, my most recent trips, and the trips that I've had several staff take in lieu of my driving the Mercer Ways, would have been between the hours of, say, 7:30 to 3 o'clock. And it, and it would be a couple of times a week. I won't say that it was a couple of times a week every week for six months, but, you know, just to get a flavor of what was happening out there. I will admit, not a lot of nighttime driving, not a lot of weekend driving. And I haven't, and I will admit also, I haven't been on my bike since July, so I haven't had the opportunity to ride Mercer Island for several months.
Anne, one of the recommendations has, waiting until problems arise, or until there's a, I don't recall exactly what the language is. Can you sort of unpackage this idea of, of waiting, and how that would then appear to staff? What would be a trigger for action? And would it have to come to council before something happened at that point? Or would that just be, you know, if you hear from somebody, that's enough to, so, I'm just looking at, give us a little bit of a sense of how you would envision working that.
So, well, so right now, and I know probably North Mercer Way isn't as high usage as, or really hasn't been part of the conversation that we've had for East and West Mercer Way. But that being said, there is a section between Sherwood, Sherwood Drive and Fortuna Drive, where we have a paved shoulder, it would be the, doesn't matter, we have a paved shoulder. And, and there are several cars that will park on that paved shoulder. Most likely, either property owners are parking there, visitors are parking there, or they've got, you know, some, some, some activity that's happening. But it's, it is at a, to a point where it appears to be parking on a regular basis, on a daily basis. That would be a trigger for staff to say, that's a location that we probably need to sign. And in that particular case, would be for no parking, I would say no parking anytime, or if council, you know, wanted to have parking available in the evening hours, would be a no parking AM to PM kind of a signage. There's no place to park off pavement, so that would be my recommendation. And my, and the way, the most expeditious way for staff to go about that would be to recognize it as a problem, and then to immediately sign it. Or notify the neighbors adjacent to that part, to that area, and then sign it, without bringing that technical decision back to the council to have to make.
Thank you. Okay, Dan?
Let's just pursue that line of questioning. So the issue is, when the problem arises? So when you were going around the island, did you see any cars parked in the shoulder?
Yes.
And so if I'm a bicyclist going around the island, and there's a car parked on that shoulder on a given day, and maybe it's the only time it's ever parked there, but there's a car parked there, what do I have to do as a bicyclist? Or what do I have to do as pedestrian if I want to get around that car?
In most every, well, I won't say in most every instance. In some of the instances, you're going to have to go out into the travel lane, into the driving lane, to get around that single vehicle.
And if I'm driving by that car, what assurances do I have that someone won't open a door when I'm driving by? If I'm biking by or I'm walking by, what assurances do I have that someone won't open a door?
I can't tell you that there are any assurances for that happening or not happening.
And so, your comment that you would have to, that you could potentially go by without going on the pavement, doesn't take into account that someone could just open a door as you're going by?
Is there a question?
I think that was a question.
Yeah, it's a setup.
No, I'm just trying to understand, I'm trying to understand...
Councilmember Grass, you're badgering.
You know, I'm just trying, well, you may call it badgering, but the, the point was, okay, this is, we'll get into debate on this, but this is...
I have a question.
Yeah, that's, that's a good debate point. Let's leave it there, and try and set up staff. Okay, Jane?
I have a question. I guess it's for you, or perhaps Chief Holmes could weigh in on this. The goal seven of, of the Bicycle-Pedestrian Plan says, promote efficient use of rights of way by providing for safe shared use by both motorized and non-motorized uses. Safety, I think, should be the main concern here. So, do we, do we have any stats on accident rates that, at areas along the Mercers that are caused by the conflict here between pedestrians, bicycles, walkers, related to parking? I mean, is there any way of getting at that?
Good evening.
Do we have, you know, evidence of safety problems?
Yeah, we have, I did not bring those with me. We have tracked those on the East Mercer, West Mercer, North Mercer Way, bicycle, bicycle vehicle accidents, bicycle, bicycle, bicycle pedestrian accidents. There is no one area where there are significantly more than others where we right-of-way identify that as a concern area. They're, they're spread out throughout the Mercer Ways, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions before we get into discussion here? Okay, in an attempt to try and bring some kind of order to our discussion here, let me, let me throw out some possibilities for parking restrictions. I started out with this, but one idea is to restrict parking on the Mercers from 7 to 7, or maybe dusk to dawn.
Mr. Mayor, now, just, we've been using the Mercers and East and West Mercers interchangeably. I think we are limiting ourselves to East and West Mercers in this discussion, aren't we?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, right now, it's the, all three Mercers, and if, if you want to propose to limit it to East and West Mercer, we can get to that later on, so. The second would be, have exceptions or exemption for weather-related events, however we want to define that. Another might be exceptions or exemptions for special events at clubs and, and so on. And then the one we talked about, that Mike Grady has suggested, and actually is a page in the Bike and Pedestrian Plan where there's a map that shows restrictions potentially, it doesn't go there quite, but it says possibility of restrictions and parking in these areas where the sightlines are really limited and constrained, and that therefore would be primarily a safety issue. Are there any other ideas that we should discuss tonight, in terms of restrictions or not? Mike, Cyril?
Right. I think we need to limit this to the East and West Mercer, Mercers. This has been an agenda that has, up to this point, has been the East and West Mercers. And you open up to the North Mercer, then you start, you've got that VFW and the Roan Oak there, which is a whole different issue, I think, and it needs to be handled separately. And we have, we have always been talking about East and West Mercer on this. Did you say 7 a.m., 7 p.m.?
That's just one idea out there.
Okay, I'll go down my list, if you're keeping track of them.
Well, I mean, what, where are you, you're making a proposal now to exempt any kind of restrictions on North Mercer, is...
Well, okay, my proposal, Mr. Mayor, is that we just limit this discussion to the East and West Mercers.
So how does everybody else feel about that?
Just, the history, the history of this is the improved roadside shoulders. The whole reason this discussion is being generated is because over the last 10-plus years, this council, as a matter of policy, has created these improved roadside shoulders to enhance safety along East, West, and part of North Mercer. And it's a very small part of North Mercer where this shoulder's been put in. I believe it's from the VFW down to the traffic light is the only place where we've added it on North Mercer.
I think we've added some of short, there, Covey Shores.
I don't know if that was part of this, whatever, because on, on that part, you actually have a, you have a bike path and pedestrian path with, which parallels it.
Right.
It was the one part between, and there was, there was a gentleman, in fact, he ran for Congress, I forget his name, who, who came to us, and actually, Alex, yeah, who lobbied us on that, and convinced the council at that point to put in those shoulders between the Roan Oak and the, so, that's all we've ever talked about in this discussion, is these improved roadside shoulders. And the whole theory behind it was that we had expended this money and made this effort for the specific purpose of enhancing pedestrian, bicycle, and as a consequence, vehicle safety by putting these improved roadside shoulders in. So it's not, I don't think we're ever, I don't think we've ever talked about all of East Mercer, all of West Mercer, all of North Mercer. I think the discussion's always been focused on where these improved roadside shoulders are put in.
I tend to disagree, Councilmember Grass, and the reason that I tend to disagree is that if, we, we've already been talking about East and West Mercer. If we would have been talking about North Mercer also, I can guarantee you, Dorothy and the commander of the VFW would have, would either be raising hell, or certainly would have been making public appearances. This has always been limited to East and West Mercer.
Okay, Bruce? Can you address that issue?
What I'd like to do is make a suggestion, in terms of how we, how we break apart the different pieces here. I think Mike's raising a good question, it's one that we need to address. And what I would suggest, that there are two other questions that, each can be addressed separately, and by keeping them separate, so that we have all three of these as separate items, we'll, we'll have a more logical flow to things. So one is, what are the overall roadways we're talking about here? The second would be, what does the, the restriction look like? And, oh, that's the point you've been raising, is it 7 to 7, is it dawn to dusk? When does it, you know, what are the specifics of when it applies? And the third would be, and where do we implement that restriction? So do we do it everywhere? Do we do it when there are problems? What do we do? And I think if we take those three questions separately, we'll, we'll have a little bit of a logic to what we're, we're after here.
Okay, I think I make some sense here. Mike Grady, on this particular issue, do you have some thoughts?
Well, I do, and it gets back to Dan's point, in that, you know, as we're looking through the budget, you know, we set aside money for street overlays, that has a specific purpose. We set aside, you know, funds for, you know, a whole array of things, and these funds were earmarked specifically for additional pavement on the Mercer Ways. And, you know, in my understanding, include all three of them. So I think, you know, we need to focus back on what was the legislative intent of doing that, and it was for a public safety issue. Because the safety being, the pedestrian and the biker need some bailout pavement in order to be able to get off the road enough so a car or a truck can go by. Without that, then you've got the pedestrian and the biker and the car all in a very narrow space. And without that, that added pavement, I can say, from personal experience, that additional pavement has saved me on many an occasion. Where you've got pedestrians walking a dog on a 12-foot leash, and the dog's halfway across the road, and then you've got a FedEx truck coming right behind you. So it's, to me, it's always been about public safety, it's always been about sightlines, and it's always been about the legislative intent of this program. And it's, the funding is specifically for safety improvements for the Mercers, so that we can get pedestrians and bikes around those areas safely while cars are passing, are going by.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a, I mean, this is staring a straight in the face. If you look at Exhibit, with all due respect, it's not about, it has not been about the Mercers. If you look at Exhibit AB 4574, PFP Plan Follow-Up, East and West Mercers. If you look at the second paragraph, October 14, council meeting for council discussion regarding potential solutions to parking on East and West Mercer Way. Roadside shoulders on the inside of East and West Mercer Ways. Now, if we do not limit it to East and West Mercer Way, we're doing a fast one on the community, especially to those folks who are making their bread and butter on the Mercer, on North Mercer.
Mike, I think we all agree, let's, the first question teed up here is, what roadways are we talking about? And you have anything to add to that, Jane? Okay. So Bruce, your thoughts on, you posed the questions, now where, where do you land?
Yeah, it's a great question to start on. I just would like, if staff could clarify, or Dan, if you can, if somebody could clarify for me, we've heard from Mike, nothing on the North Mercers, I'd like to hear the other proposal, because it wasn't the whole North Mercer, it was a fraction of North Mercer, and I'd like to understand what was proposed, so that I'm up to speed on this.
You know, I, I think the only area which is really of any interest on this is, is the area between the Roan Oak and the, and the intersection, that's the only place you have a shoulder. If Mike is concerned about the parking right next to the VFW, and that, I mean, I, this is, I don't think this is worth getting all bent out of shape over. If it's just, if you're concerned about 25 yards or 50 yards, if that's your, your big thing, that's fine. Yeah, at the end of the day, the issue really, Mike, is that you've got a parallel bicycle, bicycle path there, but it happens to be on a considerable hill. So there are people who probably try to avoid that hill because of the, the slope of it. So if, if that's, if, you know, if, if you feel, if there's an issue specifically for the VFW, you want to carve out an area there, I, I don't think anyone's going to get so bent out of shape over that, but I, I don't think you should necessarily use that little area around the VFW to necessarily, you know, take away the, what could be to the, to the east of that. So, yeah, is, is your concern just the VFW? Is that the big deal here?
No, sorry, I mean, I've mentioned the VFW and the Roan Oak several times.
Sure, I mean, that's fine.
I've mentioned them in the same, in the same breath. One, and two, again, we have represented this agenda as an East and West Mercer throughout the life of it, so to slip in the North Mercer, you know, it's just not the way we have public discussion.
And no, no one's trying to slip in anything. I mean, if you're, if the concern is that, to make sure that we don't impinge on the parking for the, for the VFW and the Roan Oak, I, I don't think anyone's going to get uptight.
I think the way this will develop is, we do a successful policy on the East and West Mercers, and then in a quick, a new, another quick agenda, we'll do it for the North Mercers. With the exceptions, having, giving the Roan Oak owner and the VFW commander their time to input to the North Mercers.
That's fine.
Okay, so let's, we, let's address this question now. How many people want to eliminate any kind of program or restrictions we come up with, or staff guidance we, that we come up with tonight to East and West Mercer?
I'm sorry, please.
How many, how many want to restrict the discussion only to East and West Mercer?
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, it looks like it's unanimous, it's East and West Mercer, okay.
It's not unanimous.
Oh.
I didn't vote for that. So, but it's fine.
Okay, well, it's 5-1 then, I guess.
Just wanted to let, you know...
East and West Mercer, okay. So, what other ideas would anybody like to propose?
Well, so again, I would propose that we have two parts to this discussion now. The first being, in whatever order you like, but the, what does a restriction look like? And secondly, where do you apply a restriction? So whichever order you like, but I think it best to keep them separate.
Why don't you start with a restriction and where it should be or not be?
Those two questions.
No, it's, no, I'm trying to, okay, so what kind of restriction we would have? I would propose that a restriction, where it's applied, and where it's applied is a different thing, but, but a restriction say, you've got to be off pavement. And I like dawn to dusk, and I think that that is essentially all I would propose to do with it.
I would agree with both those.
I'm sorry, what is, what is the first one? I'm sorry, what is the first one?
Off late, you need to be off pavement.
Yeah, you've got to park behind the shoulder.
Yep. And you can park, you can't park dawn to dusk, or you can park dusk to dawn, or...
No, no. You're saying you can park anywhere at night, but not during the day?
Right.
Okay. So on a time issue, are we in agreement that the restrictions we talk about only will apply either seven to seven or dawn to dusk?
Well, that's two different things.
Well, those are two, but I know that's the time issue, and we might want to...
I'm curious from Katie's standpoint, because she's got to enforce this thing in court, how does a, if you have something that said dawn to dusk, sunrise, sunset, how do you do that in a nice rainy place like Mercer Island?
Well, exactly. I was going to point out, there are some, and I think that the chief can speak to that too, but we have that issue at times with some other requirements. But I would say, I think my preference, if I was prosecuting this, I'd rather have a specific timeframe from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Or you could have, as headlights are required during the hours of darkness, then dawn is half an hour before sunrise, dusk is half an hour after sunset. So those are specific times.
Those are hard times, dawn and dusk. I mean, those are hard times that you can look up.
Right.
But what's interesting, and you might be able to, through an education campaign, through signage at the ends of the Mercers, explain to people what the, I mean, there's ways to, but you're saying you could, from an enforcement standpoint, you can live with something which says dawn to dusk, or sunrise to sunset, or something like that?
Yeah. It'll be interesting, as we experienced this last weekend, when suddenly the, you know, you have time changes if you were to do it at a time versus the hours of darkness. So people's schedules, you're used to parking when you get home from work, and suddenly the time changes, and that could be a little bit confusing.
Okay, so we're hearing that if we, somebody proposes a half hour before dawn to a half hour after dusk, that would work from an enforcement standpoint?
I think it's dawn to dusk, which translates to a half hour before sunrise to a half hour after sunset.
Okay. So whatever restrictions are proposed, and we need to get to those, they would apply dawn to dusk?
And I want to bounce this back to staff. Can you fit all that on a sign? Because obviously, we don't want to end up with these...
Both signs?
That'll be, it'll read, "No parking, dawn to dusk."
No on-pavement parking. Right? Because on pavement's the other thing I'm asking, and I think there was some support for that.
Well, we'll get to the exceptions and other, I just want to deal with time at the moment.
There's only a few areas where you actually have those gravel.
That is true.
So I think you can specially sign those areas without...
And what I would probably suggest is...
So Bruce, what I would suggest is that that issue be taken up, and we take up the issue of sightlines. We can combine those two. Okay. So all those, is everybody in favor of dawn to dusk?
Can I make a couple of comments?
Certainly.
I've been sitting here thinking, I am hearing solutions for what I don't really recognize as a problem. I think, you know, with the roadway as well as with the shoulders, I think the message should be what we've been trying to get out for decades, that we should share the road. It's there for everybody. I think the roads are primarily for, first and foremost, they're for Mercer Island residents, I'd like to say. I think excessive signage is unsightly. We've got plenty of signs up there, it's visual pollution. I think all these exceptions we're talking about are potentially very confusing. I don't like to see overregulation. If, it seems like we have a solution in search of a problem. And I don't, I would prefer to go ahead with monitoring the Mercer ways. If there's a certain problem, and the city receives lots of complaints about people routinely, consistently parking in a spot on a shoulder, then we can sign that area. But I am absolutely adamantly against regulating.
Okay. So again, I think we have a majority in favor of some kind of restriction. The time issue, in other words, dawn to dusk. So by elimination, anything before dawn or after dusk, any parking anywhere. So I think what might make sense now is to proceed with what kind of limitations we're talking about, and so let's talk about sightlines. And I look at this as a safety issue, and I think Mike Grady does, is, does it make sense to restrict parking where there are limited sightlines around curves and so on?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind me chiming in on that, you know, we spent a lot of money and time on the first plan and on the second plan, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And for me, you know, because I commute to work probably 100 days a year at a minimum, and I know there are many on the island that commute into Seattle or Bellevue just about every day. The number one concern is sightlines. And the map that's in the updated plan has those areas where we've identified when working with staff, so...
You're convinced it is accurate, not just...
Well, you know, any, yeah, I could use some tuning up, I'm sure. But I think the important thing, when you go to tune up, is you don't do it in a car, you do it on a bike, and you do it during rush hour, particularly in the afternoon on a weekday, where you're dealing with parents rushing home to meet their kids. I mean, the tension between 3:00 and 6:00 p.m. is much different than it is in the morning. And the safety factor for bike commuters is almost off the charts. So to what extent we can tune that up, particularly do it on a bike during those hours to ground through the current map, I think it'd be helpful. So for me, as a minimum, that's where we should be restricting the parking.
Okay, so what we're proposing, what is being proposed here is restrictions in those areas where there's, where there are limited sightlines. And any further comment on that?
Yeah, it's, and I don't, it's hard to tell. I assume that's the map, Mike, that's on page 13? Because it's hard to tell from this map what...
Well, I, Jane, I would suggest that the...
Well, I just find it to understand which map he's referring to.
Well, that map is the one whose beginning data was what Mike talked about earlier, where the staff and Mike went out and looked at places with limited sightlines. So I would urge you, this is a good starting point to be refined after another exercise going out in the field.
Right, but that's, I'm getting there, but, because Jane was showing me that, you know, that basically...
Color's better.
Color is better, but the way this is defined, its limited sight distance is basically, you know, for example, from where your house is, L, down, all the way down towards 53rd, you know, there are whole parts of this which are not defined as limited sight distance. But I would submit that everything from your house to 53rd is a limited sight distance because it's curve after curve after curve after curve. In fact, everything from, from basically your house all the way to 61st, where I, I mean, which, the only reason I know that, because I used to live down there, is curve after curve. So it is, there are very limited, to me, they're very limited straightaways on the Mercers. And what I'm very nervous about, because it's just going around the island multiple times every year, is you come even along a straightaway, as soon as there's a car that's sitting on that straightaway, and you have to then go around it. And I didn't mean to badger you before, Ann, but I've seen enough of this to unnerve me when I'm going around a car and I see someone sitting in there, and you don't know whether they're going to open the door, you have no idea whether they're seeing you. So instead of just going around them within like two or three feet, if you want to be careful, you're going to go out five or six feet, because you don't know whether you're going to get yourself killed, because if they open the door, you're dead. And that's, it doesn't make any difference at that point, whether it's a straightaway or a curve. The point is that all of a sudden, you're in the road. And then if you have a car coming behind you, or if you have a car coming the other direction, it doesn't make any difference anymore whether you're on a straightaway or a curve, you're in trouble. Because if you haven't stopped to let those cars pass, you've put yourself in a situation where you could be, you could be caught. And it's not just the bicyclists, it's the pedestrian as well. You know, once that pedestrian is committed into that to go into the road, then they're suddenly exposed. And if a car going at 30 miles an hour suddenly is there, you know, if, you're, again, you're potentially in trouble. So I get the idea that there is some intellectual basis for saying, let's focus on the limited sight distance. But again, I would just remind the council that we put in these improved roadside shoulders for a very basic purpose. And it was to protect bicyclists, pedestrians, and vehicles. It was to avoid the situation for vehicles where they get to a point, and suddenly there's a bicycle there, or there's a pedestrian there, and they have to try to swerve, and they end up going over the bank, or they end up going into the other lane of traffic and hit somebody, another vehicle coming the other direction. This is not just protect bicyclists or pedestrians. This was to protect all modes of transportation. Because we all know how many accidents there have been on east Mercer. Anyone who's lived down there knows on a regular basis, someone's going off over the, one of those cliffs. It happens every year, at least two or three people, you've got accidents going over there. And it's, you know, I can't say it's due always to a bicyclist, but it's a very difficult road to navigate. We all know that. And, you know, west Mercer less so, but it's still, west Mercer's got its challenges. And that's the whole point. I mean, I just think this is one of those things where I would much prefer that we focus on the improved shoulders, and say all the improved shoulders are off limits to whatever parking restrictions we put in there. Subject to the, you know, the exemptions that we talked about back a year ago with special events, yeah, we need to build something in for that. I fully agree. But other than that, I would like to see all the shoulders covered.
Okay, so I think that, so we don't get hung up on every curve on east Mercer. And I think we reference the map in the bicycle and pedestrian plan, but I think if we go that route to say, let's have some parking restrictions where sightlines are not there, not adequate, or whatever, I think we've got to leave it up to staff to pick the particular spots, rather than us trying to pick every curve on east Mercer.
Well, to Councilmember Grous' point, what we're talking about are the, where the shoulders have been improved.
Right.
Where you're on a limited sight distance, i.e. at a curve.
Right.
Where there is not a shoulder, where a shoulder has not been improved, it's not practical, because you've got a ditch there, nobody's going to park there.
If I heard Dan Wright, he's proposing everywhere where the shoulder's been improved, not just curves, so that is different.
And I agree with that, and what I'm, I'd like to further tweak it, is that we're talking paved shoulders, meaning if you're outside on those few places where it's available, if you're outside the shoulder, then off the pavement, then you're okay. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, well, so, but there's a difference between restrictions just where you have limited sightlines and restrictions on all improved shoulders.
Well, not in practice, Mr. Mayor, I don't think so. Because where you have limited sightline, and there's not an improved shoulder, you have a ditch there where you can't park. Is that right?
Yeah, we do have quite a few straightaways that are pretty long straightaways that we have improved shoulders on. There's no sight distance issue at all. And Dan's proposal is, you wouldn't want to park there either.
Well, that's where there's a shoulder, where you said there's a shoulder.
Yeah, where there's a shoulder. But there's no sightline issue.
No sightline.
There really is a difference between the two.
So Mike...
But I'll support Dan's...
I understand. Well, I want to get clear with Mike Ciro that there's a difference here between what Dan's proposing and what we're talking about of limited sightlines.
Yeah, Dan, I believe, okay, let me brief back, to see if I'm communicating what Dan is saying. What Dan is saying is that where we have improved the shoulder, we're going to limit parking there.
Regardless of whether it's a curve.
Regardless of whether it's a curve or not. And you can, where those areas are, where there's a shoulder outside of the improved shoulder, the gravel, you can park there.
Yeah. Okay, so Bruce?
I'm going to offer a contradictory opinion for just a second, and it's a little bit Jane's concern about sign blight. I guess my starting point is that I think where we have gone to a great deal of expense with public dollars to create these shoulders, we absolutely intend these shoulders to be used for pedestrians and bicyclists, and to create a separation of traffic. No question about that. But the place I pause is when I consider that we have a very limited budget that we've allocated for PBF work. And if there are places where there is no hint of people actually parking there, do we really want to allocate budget and sign blight to those areas? So that's where I pause, because the dollars perhaps could be better spent in other parts of our PBF than there, in areas where staff is seeing no instance of people actually parking right now.
With all due respect, I think you're talking about maybe a $1,000 or $2,000 difference. There's so few straightaways on the Mercers, particularly on east Mercer, the only straightaway you have is up, is up near the country club and the, or the shore club there, and the one down on 61st, that area. There's nothing else on east Mercer, and west Mercer is, you've got a little bit more, but it's not great. I mean, it's, I, you know, Bruce, I agree with you, we should save money wherever we can, but this is, you're going to save tuppence on this one. I mean, I think we, I really do. I mean, I, you know, I've supported trying to give more money for PBF on a regular basis, and this is, this is tuppence.
Okay, well, so we got the question teed up. I'm not going to support Dan on this, because I think it's strictly a safety issue, and I think any kind of restrictions we have should be limited to curves and sightline limitations, and not straightaways. So where does everybody stand on this? Dan's made a proposal. Who supports Dan's proposal?
Repeat the proposal, please.
Restricting parking on east and west Mercer, anywhere there's an improved shoulder on the inside.
And part of that discussion was allowing parking...
Off the pavement.
Off the pavement.
Off the pavement.
And if we could before the, Ann, is that what ends up costing $11,000 to $18,000, or is that a subset of east and west Mercer, such that it's less than $11,000 to $18,000 to do this?
Um...
I'm sorry, I'm probably asking a question that's difficult to answer.
No, that range, that dollar range actually looks at all of east, west, and parts of north Mercer where we do have shoulders, I know, and that's off the table. That being said, it doesn't factor in that there are many linear feet of areas where we have no paved shoulder. So if all we're looking at are those areas where we have an improved paved shoulder, that cost can come down, and we can also look towards, the good thing, I'm going to chime in on this, signing all of east Mercer, not just the limited sight locations. Uniformity in your signing, signage means that you can probably, I can probably space the signs a little further apart. So in that respect, you don't have to put as many signs up.
So you will not do what has been done in the vicinity of the high school? Is that what I'm hearing? If there's, if you have questions, just go to the high school, and you'll see what I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah, no, I won't do it somewhere at the high school.
Okay, so Dan's proposal has been outlined. Where's everybody standing on it? One, two, three, four. Who's opposed? Four, two, Dan's proposal carries. Okay, so a couple other items I think we need to address, exceptions or exemptions from these restrictions. And two that come up we should talk about are weather-related exemptions and special event exemptions or exceptions. Who wants to lead off?
I'll do that, Mr. Mayor. That there's a weather exemption.
For any inclement weather, such as snow and ice?
Right.
Rain.
No, that's normal.
I don't think we have to get too wrapped around. There's a common sense weather exemption, that I'm sure staff can put together something with reference to snow and ice.
Okay, who's in favor? Okay, special events. Okay, special events. And again, rather than try to go through a list, why don't we just give general guidance to staff that there'll be exceptions, exemptions for special events at clubs and the JCC, opening day of fishing season, or during the fishing season. Has anybody noticed the number of trailers along East Mercer when fishing season opens? I would suggest that might be a special event. So, is everybody comfortable with having staff come back, or come up with a list of special events?
I just would ask Chief Holmes to weigh in with his thoughts on how you manage around something like this. I know we've talked a little bit about this before. I don't exactly remember what thoughts you had previously, but I'm curious to re-enter that discussion.
Yeah, I too don't remember the specifics for that discussion. But if we have clearly set dates, it's easier for us to know ahead of time. Or if there's an event at the Mercerwood Shore Club, or the JCC has some unusual, unexpected event, and they could, they could then, I would assume, seek an exemption through the city, as does the high school from time to time, if they have a planned event ahead of time, and they know about it, and they can let us know about it.
And you just put a, you just put a bag over the sign. I mean, that's, you give staff the power to put something, put a bag over the sign, or put something to cover up the sign, and so there's no confusion. I mean, that's the way it's done in the high school, should be done in the high school. This is, this is not rocket science. We can figure this out.
Is it done that way at the high school? I'm not aware that it is.
Like, for example, when they have the.
It's not done at the high school.
Well, in the old days, when they used to have the.
Okay, but it's not done now.
Well, when they had the breakfast there, they used to do that. They used to not enforce it. I don't know how they did it, but they used to not enforce it in the old days.
Yeah, now, we, the school district gives us a list of dates when they, at the high school, and they have a special event. And we sort of work that out within a little bit of negotiation. It's, I think, in our agreements, it's a, I don't know, some number, 20 of them a year. And once that is clarified, what those are, the neighbors are notified by letter, and then our officers don't enforce on those dates.
Correct.
That's how that works.
May I suggest that staff look, not necessarily at the dates, but looks and draws up suggestions by events. So, if there's a, the pools, they get a blanket exemption if there is a pool competition. Opening day season, whenever that's going to be, opening day season, that is an event, there is an exemption, et cetera.
I think that is the proposal.
Okay. I'm for it.
Okay. Is anybody else for it? Okay. So, let me summarize what I think we have decided, that parking restrictions on the east, and, first of all, parking restrictions only apply to East and West Mercer.
Inside line. Are we towards, some of them.
Well, wait a minute, let me finish the summary here, Mike.
All right.
They only apply to East and West Mercer. They only apply from dawn to dusk. There are exceptions for inclement weather, defined, staff will come up with a definition. There are exemptions for special events, and staff will come up with a list. And the restrictions will apply on all improved inside shoulders on East and West Mercer. Have I missed anything? Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor.
What?
I would like discussion about this construction stuff. What we're going to do, how we're going to.
Discuss, go ahead.
I think we need, I would like to see construction parking as being a valid reason to get a permit, according to, a parking permit, a blanket parking permit. And I think that there's enough construction parking out there to see where, if there is parking, if there's construction, it's not practical to park on the lot where they're having the construction.
Okay, Rich?
You know, we can accommodate that. I would continue to urge that when it comes to a construction site, that through our development services staff, we have as a condition of the permit where construction worker parking is. And if the code official determines that the only reasonable place for them to park is some part of East and West Mercer Way, where we have signs and it can be done in some safe place, then we can issue, you know, we can set up something, they can put it on the dashboard, or something, what's issued by the city, and we won't enforce for them. We could set up a system that could work, but it should, I believe, it should be handled through the building permit process, so that our code official could work directly with the police department and with the engineers on where can we reasonably do this. For the most part, we don't want people parking on the Mercer Ways for construction. But if there's no other way, we can have a system to deal with.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Does anybody else want to address that issue? Does anybody else support that issue?
Just to be clear, I think, I'm going to express a strong preference that we handle parking for construction as we do today, where they need to, they need to figure it out. Yeah, but, well, I think it ended up a little softer, I think, in the way you described it, so.
Okay. So, what I'm hearing, then, is no change in the policy of construction parking as it's handled today?
Well, evidently, there was a, what is the policy? Well, let me just do it for instance, let me just do it for instance. So, so would it be from the, from the permit official, from the code official's perspective, or from the DSG perspective? If, if the owner shows where the only place that they can't park on, on the property being improved, is the code official going to think that shuttling workers back and forth a mile or two to UFC, is that practical?
That's an option, and that is done at times, particularly for these really large, large home projects, because for all practical purposes, it isn't residential anymore.
Right, but I'm not talking about the really large projects. I'm talking about the normal, single-family owner who's.
I'm not aware that we require them to do much in the way of shuttling on the basic, single-family home, regular-sized home. It's just the big, big projects that we do, ask them to go secure parking space and shuttle people, that does happen. I don't, I don't know, Ann, you see this, I don't think this construction parking issue is that big of an issue. Occasionally, it is, but it's not, we usually can handle it.
Yeah, you know, it can be on occasion, and it really depends. Yes, the mega, the mega homes, the mega projects will have a lot of contractors, and those are the ones that we really don't want parking on, in residential areas. Because we will, it does generate a lot of phone calls to staff, that it's an imposition to the rest of the people who live in the neighborhood, that contractors are parking and blocking driveways, mailboxes, and general access. Some of the smaller redevelopments, smaller properties, not as much of a concern, because it's usually one or two contractors. Where it does become an issue, though, is when all of a sudden, every contractor and every delivery man suddenly shows up at that particular property to do what they need to do. And so, instead of one, or two, or maybe three cars, you're talking about a half a dozen to a dozen cars. And that, and that really is where the other complaints start to, are generated from.
Okay. I think we've taken care of that. There's no change in the current policy under construction, so we're moving right along to Agenda Bill 4679, which is actuarial valuation of firefighters' pension benefits and Lef One Retiree Medical and Long-Term Care Benefits, teed up by our famous finance director, Mr. Chip Quarter.
Good evening. Infamous, yeah. I believe it was Councilmember Ciro that asked that a separate agenda bill be prepared to this end, and thank you. This is something that we don't talk about very often, and it's long overdue. It's highly technical, and I tried to take, and I have an extra copy of the report, if you're interested, happy to make it available to you. And feel free to read it. Actuaries are an interesting breed.
It's a great plot, you're going to love it.
Yes, these guys, these guys are very, very skilled. What I've summarized on the board here for you is taking the information in your agenda bill, and just put it, boiled down to one simple table for you. There are three significant liabilities that relate to firefighters and/or police officers, mostly retirees. The first is the firefighter's pension benefits. Now, this applies to those few folks that were employed by the city as a firefighter on or before March 1st, 1970. That was a separate, all the cities were responsible for the pensions, basically, for the firefighters, back then. Shortly on, or after March 1st, 1970, this Lef One, this retirement system for law enforcement and firefighters began. And then, in 1977, Lef Two, a separate plan began. So, this firefighter pension benefits applies to seven people who are all retired, okay? And actually, this applies to spouses as well. So, the seven is in total, that's the total number, and these folks are getting long in the tooth. And so, thankfully for us, it's a very small number of people. But we have a separate fund, among all the city funds, called the firefighters' or firemen's pension fund. And that's where we have assets that are dedicated, okay, to pay off this liability. And we take in what are called fire insurance premium taxes from the state, it just comes from the state, we don't assess it, and it's dedicated for this particular purpose, there's a little bit of an investment interest revenue for that purpose. And as you can see, when Milliman redid the estimate of the liability, as of January 1st of this year, they came up a little over $2 million. We have a little more than half of that set aside, so it's about 51% funded. There's about a billion dollars in round numbers that's unfunded for this particular liability. You wonder how long will that last you? Well, it's using Milliman's cash outflow projections, and they're saying about 13 years. So, and, I mean, this, it starts really going down, oh, it's, I think it's 2026, where it starts, they're projecting a decline, and those benefits being paid out, that is. So, it doesn't last, it's not an ad infinitum kind of thing, it does end at some point in time.
Didn't you just say that there's revenues from the state which come in?
Yeah.
So, that's not included, but that's, that's not any of your numbers?
It's not reflected here, it's reflected in the last table that I put together in your agenda bill, where I say, "How long will these assets last?"
I see, okay.
Next, let me do this, let me take questions on each of these benefits as I go along. So, let me stop on the firefighter's pension benefits. Any questions on that particular issue?
Are we okay to just combine all three of those?
I wish, no. They're all separate.
They're separate, but if, if we, well, so, for instance, on page 15, it's all combined. So, can we, why can't we look at it as page 15, exhibit two?
Well, it actually is separated out, that's just a graphic.
Well, separated out, but I mean, it's, they're stacked, they're stacked on each other.
There's, in the case of firemen's pension, it's a separate fund, it has to be set up that way. And the other two, those are counted for separately within the general fund.
Okay.
Okay. Lef One Retiree.
Well, let me, let me ask you this question, then. So, general fund monies that are put in for the pension fund, for instance?
There aren't any. It's, I should, let me clarify, there isn't regularly budgeted general fund money.
Well, yeah, I know, but, you know, just like we had the one time, I think, with that email that I gave you, I think you know where I'm going to, that I feel this is underfunded. So, if for some reason, we started doing one-time contributions, like you did with this $100,000, and you put that into Lef One, and for some reason, we found that we were short in the firefighter pension, as we've done in the, what was the last thing that we did? As we done, as we did, the precedent set with the Seward Lake Line, that $100,000 is always identified as general fund money, so we can move it from one area to the next. That's kind of what I'm getting, where I'm looking at.
You, the council could choose to use that money for a different purpose, if that's what you're getting at. You have directed me to dedicate it, I'll come back to you with an ordinance to memorialize that, direction from the council, for Lef One Retiree Long-Term Care Costs. Okay?
I'm not looking to take it away from one of these three, I'm just saying to move it from Lef One to firefighters.
You always have that flexibility.
Okay.
So, right, if one, it ends up being, if we start, end up, instead of 13 years, it's run pace to be maybe nine years, making this up, that's very unlikely, then, yes, you'd have some flexibility to move some money from long-term care.
So, from that perspective, we could combine all three of these?
In a sense, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
There's some flexibility here.
All right.
I want to come back to the funding issue at the end, so let me finish going through these real quickly. I know this is not the most stimulating of topics for the late evening. On Lef One Retiree Medical Benefit, so there's 37 total people we're talking about, most of whom are retired, and it's actually, as of today, all of those are retired. As of January 1st, there still was one police officer, but he's now retired. So, everyone is retired as of today. And that estimated.
And just for context here, what's the earliest age that a firefighter or a policeman can retire?
Come on, Ed.
How old are you?
53 without penalty.
Lef, is that true?
Lef Two. Lef One, yeah, I think it was, I think it was. Yeah, I think it was. Being saw that didn't, yeah, we have the one, and he retired this year.
Okay. When you see the estimated liability, you go $10.3 million, holy cow! And it's a shocking number. What you have to understand is, we budget, just like we do for every other employee benefit, that's built into our general fund budget, as long as I've been here, and longer than that. And it's like $530,000, it's in your agenda bill, $530,000 and change for this year, and $590,000 budgeted next year for this particular thing.
And every year for the next 20 years, at least that amount.
Yeah, it's built in. And it will, it's projected to taper off 2025, 2026, and these are projected cash flows, obviously, and start going down, and eventually goes away.
When you say "it" taper off, what is, what is "it"? Because when I look at this chart, it doesn't taper off until 2031.
Look at the graphs, Mike.
I'll show you, I'll show you.
The graphs on page 15 that you pointed to.
Yeah, that's what I said, it doesn't taper off till 2031, and Chip is saying 2021.
Hang tight, I'll show you a, an actual copy, where the cash flows are broken out better than the summarized version I included as an exhibit. You'll see what I'm talking about. They do. But again, projected cash outflows, based on a whole bunch of assumptions regarding when people die, and how much medical care they need, and all that stuff. So, the way I view that, Milliman doesn't view it this way, they're following GAAP, Generally Accepted County Principles. This is where I think GAAP is ridiculous, not ridiculous, but, yeah, okay, ridiculous. And, because it, it's funded, it's fully funded annually by the city, period. The reason why GAAP got involved and designed some rules that are very restrictive is because some cities play games, and have played games with that money. And they call it restrictive, but it's not really restricted. And, and that's, and so, you know, from a very totally conservative, totally transparent, I applaud them, I would never do that. I would scream bloody murder if, you know, we were to do something about that, in any case. That's, that's why there's a distinction. But in my view, it's fully funded. I budget every single year. Next, Lef One Retiree Long-Term Care Benefits. This is the one that the council recently approved, let's use $100,000 of Seward Lake Line savings, and build up that reserve, push it up over $1 million. This is the one that jumped drastically, like doubled from the last time the evaluation was done, it was effective January, well, back in 2008. And I included a table that identified all the reasons why, the biggest reason for the jump, and the, your brow that's furrowing there, see, that's what happens, when I, that's exactly what was on my face, you know, when I see this 36% increase, and I'm going, "Really"? And what you have to understand is, don't forget, in my lifetime, maybe not in Councilmember Jenke's lifetime, but in my lifetime, I had a little dig. In my lifetime, investment returns have never been around .1%. You know? And the last, the last few, the last few years, they've been hideous, hideous, in terms of how I invest our money in the, in the state investment pool.
Okay, so, the biggest part is, I understand your report of 36% increase, over half of it is a changing actuarial assumption.
On investment return.
And, and what is that number today?
Oh, I knew you'd ask that. I don't have it handy. But it's going to drop.
Dramatically reduced the actuarial assumption.
And as it goes down, the liability, then that you need to put away, it goes up.
Of course, of course. And that's why, and that's more than half, explains more than half the increase.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't understand, you said that the decrease is 18%. I mean, were we making an assumption that we're going to have a 20% return?
No, they're, they're very conservative.
It says right here, 18%.
No, no.
Well, that's the, that's the amount it, in.
Accounting for the percentage change of the liability, it was a 36% change in the liability, over half of which is due to a factor, which is the assumption made on investment return.
Okay, so, when I read this, it says, "Update to investment return assumption, i.e. discount rate."
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
The difference is, an 18%?
You're not assuming 18%, they're taking the-
I know, they're assuming, the way I read this, it means a delta of 18% between this actuarial report and last actuarial report. So, were we assuming a 20% return?
No, no, Mike, it, it, that is half of the change is, is the actuarial assumption. And my guess, it went from nine to about 6% maybe, and that would cause that bigger change.
That would be a 3%.
It was never nine to begin with.
You're using different bases here.
It was right around, right around 5%.
When a 36%, half of it, or 18%, is explained by that actuarial assumption, the discount rate, if you will, went down dramatically, and that explains half or 18% of the increase.
I see. So, these, this column right here totals 36%.
It's effective, it's the investment earnings, the expected investment earnings are the money you've already got accrued, and it's down significantly.
Okay. I need to limit my speaking, I had surgery on my throat, and my, my throat is, is going on me. So, our unfunded liability is about, you know, over, shy of 3.1 million, we're 25% funded, based on Milliman's numbers, projected to last us through 2021 or 11 years. Yeah, I'd like that to be better. And you see in the recommendation, it's in your agenda bill, whenever we have revenue surpluses, my recommended funding strategy, and there's more than one, is just to take pieces of revenue surpluses, I've, I've gone to the council, anytime we have revenue surpluses, and let's put some away for long-term care. We need to do it for firefighters' pension benefits as well. And over time, we will, we'll be fine. The other way to approach it, if you're not comfortable, the more conservative way to approach it, is to dedicate some of our ongoing annual revenue to that purpose. That takes away from existing programs, but that, it's not a right versus wrong, it's where your values are, and that is another legitimate way to do that. We're already doing, at Councilman Ciro's request, and the council bought off on this, I'm setting aside $1,000 out of the annual budget, going to long-term care. Now, that doesn't-
Drop in the bucket.
It's, it's not even a drop in the bucket, but that, that the council all supported that, and so, I'm, I'm doing $1,000 a year.
We did that?
You did that. But-
Yes.
And how long did we debate that?
That went really quickly.
Eurozone next.
My point is, that's an option, if you really wanted, you know, as part of the budget process, as we get, we'll be doing a mid-biennial budget review next council meeting, and we can even chat about that if you like. But you could say, "Chip, I want to see the city dedicate more money as part of the annual budget process to that," and we could. That's it for the presentation, questions?
Let me lead off with a couple here. On page 5, up in that chart there, you have plus fire insurance premium tax, what is that?
I cannot even explain to you. This $25,000 or so that we get annually from the state-
Okay, so that's a cumulative number over 20 years?
Yeah, we don't collect it, the state collects it.
And then they send it to us?
And they send it to us.
Okay.
Would that go on for the life until, until we're paid off?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, then less projected cash outlay, outlays per Milliman, and you got the two, two numbers there, big numbers, and 104,000, and then 90,000. How are those covered? Are those covered with the 550,000 a year from the general fund that we're allocating these retirement costs?
When you said 104,000, did you mean the 1.04 million? Which numbers are you referring to?
Well, I mean, under less projected cash outlays per Milliman-
Yeah.
There's a minus 1,356, and a minus 988,000. And I just annualized them at 104,000 a year, 90,000 a year. Where, those come from where?
That, that's Milliman's projections of what we'll spend on firefighter pension benefits.
Okay.
And spend on long-term care benefits.
Okay, and so, that totals 194,000 a year?
Right.
And we're allocating more than 550,000 a year from the general fund?
That's a separate thing, that's for medical benefits, not long-term care, I'm sorry, it's always confusing, because long-term care is a subset under medical benefits.
Right.
But in reality, it's for accounting purposes, it's totally separate, medical benefits is everything but long-term care benefits. I didn't include it on this table, because it's already funded.
Right, funded how?
Through the budget process, I've set aside-
So, is it part of the 550 or 590 or whatever from, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that is the money, right there, most of which is insurance.
Okay, Dan.
On the page 5 of the agenda bill, the, I'm a little unclear on the, on the investment of interest, 2011 through 2023, for example, it shows 34,000, that's a cumulative amount? Or is that a annual amount?
Yes, yes, that's assuming a really low rate of interest.
Yeah, I mean, but shouldn't, I mean, you're earning at least 1%, aren't you?
No.
You're not even earning 1%?
No, Dan, I'm, I'm like .15 right now.
Yeah.
It's horrible.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, and do you have any discretion on how you invest this?
Yes.
Is there any, I mean, you, there's no, I mean, even in T-bills, you can get more than 1% right now.
Yeah, that-
Do you want to go out beyond, just go for some Italian bonds or something?
Right, no, I understand, but why wouldn't you, given, given your projected outlays on this, why wouldn't you go out at least, you've got no, you've got no expenses right now. Why wouldn't you go out and invest this in something that is, that gives you a higher return than must be point, yeah, like you said, .01, .15, or?
I, I, these are really good candidates for longer-term investments, absolutely.
But shouldn't we be doing that, then?
Yes.
I mean, so why, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to interrogate you, but can we, do you need guidance from the council to authorize you to do that?
Nope, it just has fallen off the work plan. It just hasn't got, gotten around to it.
Okay, but can we, can you-
Yes.
Can you come back to the council, maybe in your, in your fourth quarter wrap-up or whatever, and just update us on where you're going on that? Because, I mean, there's, I, you look at these numbers, and even, just the fact that it's not, even if it's on your work plan, these numbers should be significantly higher than this, to get up to, you know, if you, you should be able to assume, I mean, you know this better than I do, what's the T-bill rate if you go out five years now?
10 years, it's only 2%.
Five years, it's about 150, 100, 1.5% or thereabouts.
10 years, 2%?
You know, I mean, it's the type of thing that, again, I, I think if, if you're concerned, and you want guidance from the council, and you give us some ideas of what the alternatives are, but, you know, it might be appropriate on something like, you know, long-term care benefits, given the demographics of this group, to go out on a 10-year T-bill, if, if you thought that was appropriate, and then-
Yeah, I'd go five.
And then we could always borrow, if, if worse came to worse, we really got pushed, we could always move money around between other funds on an interim basis. I, I just, I don't know, I, I just, it scares me when I see these numbers, because I-
Dan, Dan, I think you make a good point here, and I'd, I'd say, we certainly want to look at the investment horizons out longer term, and maybe not even limit ourselves to T-bills, and I guess my first question is, who's investing money now? Is this Mercer Island, or are we part of a larger pool, a King County pool, or a state pool?
Washington State pool.
So, it's in the Washington State pool, and that means maybe there's restrictions on what, where we invest it, or do we have the authority to do it on our own?
Yeah, I can go off on my own.
Okay, so then, it's a question of picking an investment manager that, having a strategy, number one, and then picking somebody to do the investment, I think.
What I wanted to do is come back to the council at some point, you know, this is the one thing that I've just pushed on the back burner, and the recession got in the way, and it's the one thing where I want to develop a policy and come back to the council, make sure you're comfortable with the policy.
Italian bonds are at 10 and 1/2% right now.
Well, Greek are about 35.
I'm going to weigh into this, you know, feels like we're, we've gone where we probably don't belong, but is there, is there also not a, is there also not a-
It happened before.
An argument to be made, though, for sitting tight until interest rates go up, because you're locking a long-term, really, really low rate right now, and then you wish you hadn't in a year or two, when we get off these record lows.
You've been all your eggs in one basket, you diversify them.
Well, you would do maybe a, what was in the business called a laddering approach, where you invest, have the funds with a series of maturities from short to medium to long, depending on what your actuary says the timing of your needs is going to be. So, you wouldn't put them all at 10 years, you'd have them going out probably, maybe 15 years, or, or, from, from a couple of years, only out to 15. Mike Ciro.
Chip, the spreadsheet that I sent to you, did you have a chance to look at that?
Yes, I did look at that.
Did it make any sense at all?
Um, I'm trying to recall, it had some problems.
Good question, I'd be careful.
I'm, I'm just forgetting it, I didn't bring a copy with me.
Yeah, I didn't bring a copy with me either, I thought I did. The, the issue that I had with it, I combined, is it, to get a cash flow using the data on page 5 against the table on page 14, and you develop the cash flow with that information, I find that we, we zero out, we run out of money at 2021. Paying roughly 550,000. From a policy perspective, I'm uncomfortable with this pay-as-you-go policy that we have, versus using the time, time value of money, I don't know, till 2041 or so, until we get over this hump. And tell us how much we need to pay from the general fund on an annual basis, front-load, so that when 2021, whomever this council is, they're not faced with zero assets, because we've used them all, and, you know, annually, million-dollar payments.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's the whole issue. What, what's the, what's the property taxes right now? How much capacity do you have above the 1%? What do we, what do we, what bank, what's our bank capacity?
It's very small, it's, it's under, it's under 300,000, I forget.
Per year?
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you were, if you were, if you were really serious about dedicating a line of revenue for this, then you would, like we did for the fire engines, if you recall.
Yeah, you could do that.
You could, you could take some of the bank capacity and say, this is, I mean, you can't bind a future council, but you could clearly make a strong statement that you would take, even a half a percent would get you $50,000 a year.
Well, I, from a policy perspective, I, I think it's irresponsible to have a pay-as-you-go policy on this.
I understand, but that, but you've, you've got to make those kinds of tough decisions if you want to do that.
Well, we need to have that information to say, "Right now, we're going to pay-as-you-go." I don't like pay-as-you-go, I, I think it's straddling future councils for expenses that should be paid now.
Do you understand?
You know, you guys are, it's a really, it's a very good discussion there, and we've got the timing, we can make this work. If that's something that is of interest for you to debate, at your next meeting, Chip's going to come forward with the mid-biennial budget actions, and that's where you'll set the property tax for 2012. And this is a, your suggestion, Dan, is perfectly doable, it is a way for the council to make a decision, this is an obligation of the city in the future, and this is one of the ways that we're going to deal with it, is to carve out an increment of the property tax to pay for it.
That's only one way to pay for it, let me suggest that there's another aspect to this, to the extent we go this route, and it's analogous to the sinking fund for the fire apparatus, and some other sinking funds we've established, but at the same time, this, every dollar accumulated, as we've just established, is earning all-time world-record-low returns. So, is it really the best time to start accumulating dollars that are going to earn really low returns for the foreseeable future? And I'm saying, at least two years, and maybe longer, that's part of the discussion and debate also.
Well, I mean, this is a policy that's going to extend for several decades, to think that we're going to be at 1 and 2% return on our fund will not be the case.
It may be, because we can set whatever we, policy we want to set this year and next year, but as Dan's pointed out, any future council can change the policy. And so, it's not a permanent 20, 30-year policy that we might think we'd be doing if, if we make that kind of a decision.
I just want to make sure you understand, when I say pay-as-you-go, what I'm really saying is, this $500,000 and change per year, it's really dedicated property tax, is really what it is.
But the point-
Each year, L F 1 retiree medical benefits.
But what I have, I don't think what you've articulated to the council and the, and the folks out there, is that with this $500,000, I mean, we're going to run out, the council, the city will run out of money around 2021.
Now, you're, you're mixing apples and oranges, you cannot do that. This is a separate, that particular issue, L F 1 retiree medical cost is fully funded every year, don't, you can't, I can't take that money.
Something's going to run out. If I use the table-
The other two issues.
Okay, the, the, using the table on page 14.
Yeah.
I mean, this is-
Look right there.
Something's going to, we're going to hit, between the three of them, something's going to run out in 2021, and the future liability to the city will be about $1 million plus each year for, until, until 20, for 15 years.
That's what I put in your agenda bill. I'm, I'm saying, yes, one of them will run out in 2021, the other in 2023. Two of the three.
And if you, if you notice in the agenda bill, what the finance director is proposing is, we take a large chunk of annual surplus carryover, and dedicate it to one or more of these funds, retirement funds. So, and that's a discussion for a future meeting, not tonight.
Okay. I guess, Chip, what, what I'll ask for my benefit, if the, the other council members will also want that, is that you develop a plan that shows if we take it from now until the annual expenses become manageable, and we were to annualize or time-value that, that money, how much more than the 500 we would have to?
For a nice, even annual stream.
That's right.
What would that look like?
That's right, that's right. That would be very beneficial for me, I think. Thank you.
Okay, so, this agenda bill requires no action, it was a report, so unless somebody has further comments or questions, we'll move right along here to-
I'd just like to say, thank you, Chip, I found that very beneficial, and I think worthwhile exercise.
Yep.
Okay, council member absences.
Can I, can I say one thing? I mean, I, unless the council strongly opposes this, because I think it's, we haven't obviously made a decision on this, but I, I think, Mike, you've raised a very valid point, I think we have to have that discussion as part of the tax issue. The only way we pay for this, I think, unless we're going to start going in and changing the budget we've already approved, is to look at a revenue source. And, you know, what, what, I think it makes sense for staff, when they come to us in two weeks or four weeks, whenever the, the tax question's going to be posed before us, at least to tee that up as a, as a question for the council to address at that time.
Well, it would be the whole picture, and you know, there, it's, it's priorities, and certainly, you know that I'm not anxious about increasing taxes, so.
I figured you'd be the one who'd make the most.
Okay, council member absences, anybody planning on being absent in the next two meetings? Okay, so, planning schedule, Mr. City Manager, you-
Should we excuse the mayor?
Brief us on the planning schedule for the next two meetings, and any changes, any comments?
Uh, well, actually, Councilmember Bass makes a good point, before we do that, the mayor missed this meeting, do you want to do a-
Can we do a stand too?
He missed this meeting, the mayor missed this meeting, you usually do-
Oh, move to excuse Jim Pearman. The mayor.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Pose. Okay, sorry, Jim, but I understand you're having a wonderful time back there, doing a lot of rowing for his heart. Okay, planning schedule.
Um, don't have any changes, based from what you see there now.
Questions, comments? Okay, board appointments to the design commission, having discussed this briefly with Bruce, um-
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd move to table this discussion until our next meeting, if we could.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I just have a point, what, what do you table?
The appointments to the design commission, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. Okay. The appointments to the design commission will come forth next meeting by your mayor, Mr. Pearman, who, uh, we all anticipate being here next meeting. So, uh, council member reports, we'll start with Jane.
Uh, let's see, I have nothing to report this time.
Dan? Bruce?
Uh, thank you. I make a habit of, uh, volunteering to, for the Mercer Island Schools Foundation for their phone-calling campaign, and that campaign unfortunately is tonight, and, uh, so I wasn't able to participate in it, but I would encourage you and everybody to, as they say, take the call and participate in donating to our schools. Secondly, I understand that the city staff has just completed their Twenty-Two Ways Challenge effort, uh, the results haven't all been tabulated yet, but I understand that there was-
Twenty-two ways to reduce your carbon footprint.
You will recall that you and other council members-
You recall that I tried?
You did, indeed.
You were a participant. But I fell off my plate.
I understand that participation's been very high among the city staff, and, uh-
It was excellent.
Kudos are in order.
Yeah, we were very surprised and delighted, the staff really jumped in on it.
More on that to follow, I'm sure.
Mr. Grady?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, two things, uh, one, WRAID had a workshop, uh, end of last week on the Shoreline Master Program and ways to improve it, so I had a chance to go there and give my two cents worth, or more, um, and it was well-attended, particularly from